We're all set. Have a good meeting.
Thank you very much. All right. Call the October 2nd Situate School Committee meeting to order at 6 o'clock PM. Just to reiterate, the Situate School Committee is committed to providing an environment of respect during meetings. We ask all members to interact in a polite manner even when there is disagreement. We value the participation of our community and want all participants, including marginalized and minoritized communities, to feel welcome and respected. We ask our committee members and all who participate to commit to these standards to support and respect our community. Right? Public comment will be available tonight through Zoom as well as in person. Community members can email me at any time at nbrandolini@sit.org. Any questions? All right. That being said, we will begin with public comment. Just to reiterate, per policy BEDH, speakers will be allowed to have up to three minutes to present their material. Please state your name and your address or city and town for the policy. And with that, we will take public comment. Start in person.
I'll go first.
Great.
Hi, my name is Andrea Hunt. I live at 66 Manlot Road. There's been some confusion about the Healthy Youth Act. And last school committee meeting I was watching online, and Maria had stated that we had no choice but to accept that format. And after doing some research and looking up the laws and regulations, they're saying that each district has the opportunity to either adjust the format or opt out of the format, and that sex education is definitely not something that is required in the state of Massachusetts. So I got the bill out and read the whole bill and also the bill that is coming up in the Senate and House on October 10. And again, I had some confusion because I had been told that if that was accepted and health education and sex education was combined together under the heading of health education, that we would no longer have the opportunity to opt out of the sexual education portion. But according to the bill, it states clearly here in one of the amendments that the schools are to, the comprehensive self-help education is provided by the school. The right of a parent or guardian to withdraw a student from all or part of the instruction is part of the information we're supposed to be given. And the process for a parent or guardian to notify the school for the student's withdrawal. And my understanding of the process is that you get a piece, that you have to fill out a form and you have to file that. So that raised my question with if, if you can opt out of this and it's under the guise of health education, then how do we fulfill the requirement under the general law? The general law 71, chapter 1 and 3, that health is required. So then back here, it says that if a parent or guardian withdraws a student from all or part of the comprehensive sexual health education curriculum, the student shall not be subject to disciplinary action, academic penalty, or any other sanction. An alternative educational activity shall be made available to any student who has been withdrawn from the sexual health education instruction. So I guess my question is, if this is adopted, I know several parents and families in town that, that are not happy with some of the curriculum that is in this, this new bill that is coming up in the Senate on October 10. And they're thinking about opting their children out, but feeling that they can't because then they won't get health education. So I guess what I want to know is, is Situate going to keep health education and sex education separated enough so that if you opt a child out, you can still then get health education without having the sexual content?
Can I respond? So. Yeah, I mean, I guess that's a question for us considering that's something that happens here. So I would say that first of all, we don't have curriculum on that right now. It's a framework. So from where we're at at this current moment, we haven't quite gotten to that stage yet. When we're talking about opt-outs for all things, that's always been an option in Situate. And certainly I would encourage parents to speak to classroom teachers regarding curriculum content and what's delivered at that level currently in Situate. In terms of the adoption of this new framework, we will, of course, as this kind of unfolds, plan to have that as an actual agenda item where we would go through it as part of the process and include all the parties that need to be included in said discussion. But of course, I mean, off the top of my head, I'm just speaking and generalizing from my own experiences. When a parent has requested an opt-out for something, I've never known it to be not accommodated. And the sort of, you know, and provided then with sort of a comparable, I certainly know there's been the past, there have been questions of whether, you know, what the comparable material is. Like you want to make sure that if somebody opts out of something, they're not just sitting coloring or something, but getting something of value for their education. So. But again, I think those are teacher-level conversations when we're talking about specific curriculum and instruction at this point. So I would say if someone has a question about our current sex education model and what's going on in the health and wellness classrooms, that I would reach out directly to those teachers that.
So our sex education, by understanding now, is separate from health, or it can be. So if you opt out of sex, you're still in the health and physical fitness.
Yes.
So under this format, they are including the sexual contact, content in the health program. And the health programs are required. So I guess my question is, if you opt out of sex and it's not going to be separated anymore, so how will your child fill out the required health education? Or can that be included separately?
Right. I would say if Assistant Superintendent for a school wishes to comment as, you know, she's Assistant Superintendent of Curriculum and Instruction.
I think I'll be quick. There currently, you absolutely may opt out of sex education. The same is true when we have the new frameworks in place. There is no hidden, the sex education comes under health, so now you have to hear it. We absolutely respect and honor any parent who opts out of sex education. That's their right and will continue the process when we adopt the new frameworks.
So maybe even if it's under health education, they'll teach health at some time and then send the.
That's, that's how it happens right now.
To the library during the sex part of it.
And that is exactly what happens right now. That's exactly what, like Chair Brandalini said. So we will continue to do that to make sure that we respect the parents' wishes and their rights to talk.
Okay, thank you.
All right, continuing with public comment. Hold on one second. Let me just check online because I like to sort of toggle here. Not seeing any hands raised currently. So proceed in person.
Good evening. My name is Maureen Kindley, Situate. However, I was on the Younger School Committee in another town for nine years before we moved to Situate. And I'm also a registered nurse. I am quite familiar with the laws that govern Massachusetts schools. And I would also like to talk about some history and the process as to how we got to the health curriculum that was voted on by the DES Board last week and the next steps. As you know, DESE is the umbrella agency that oversees public education in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. However, the laws that govern public schools are done through the legislature. It is not the DESE that writes the laws that Massachusetts districts have to adhere to. However, DESE does write a lot of advisories, but these are not laws. DESE does write standards such as curriculum frameworks. However, these are guidelines, not law. Each school committee has wide latitude discussion in how standards are implemented at the local level, including curriculum and materials. For the subjects that are tested by MCAS, it makes sense that the local districts follow the guidelines. But again, there was no law mandating it. Districts can craft their own curriculum and choose whether or not they adopt the standards. National laws, chapter 71, section 1 and section 3 require all public schools to teach health education and physical education. But it's up to the local district how they do that. If they had one day of physical health and one day of physical education, that would meet the requirement. There are no state laws that mandate sex education, nor are there any federal mandates. State law, chapter 71, section 32A and section 1 on disease, gives parents the right to opt out. During the nine years that I was on the school committee and every year thereafter, a group of progressives would propose a very controversial or radical health agenda, including sex education that started in kindergarten. And they would then bring it to the legislature. There would be a day of hearings with many parents, community members, speaking against it. They were never voted on, but would go up to a study committee and essentially it was dead. I'm sure that the legislature did not want to vote on this controversial issue. This year was a little bit different in that the governor decided that she would try to get the same radical health agenda passed by going through the board of the DESE. Although the majority of the public comments that the DESE received were against the proposed curriculum, the DESE passed it anyway with little to no discussion. It was disappointing, however, no surprise as politics played a large role. Out of the 11 members on the board, nine of them are appointed by the governor. So of course, they were going to vote how the governor wanted them to vote. I repeat, the DESE does not make laws. As reported by all the major news stations at the meeting after the vote, Commissioner Riley said it was now up to each local school committee to decide whether or not they would adopt these standards. I'm assuming that the Situate School Committee would follow the advice of Commissioner Riley. So I will ask you, when will you place this on your agenda so that parents, community members could give their input? And then when would you be taking the vote? Thank you.
Thank you very much. We have not, it's not on our agenda yet, clearly. There's, as it's still kind of in the legislature, legislative, you know, it's being voted on October 10 as well. So we're sort of just, it will be on our agendas.
Okay, thank you. We're more forward to it.
We have a few hands raised remotely. Let me just check here. One first and that one. All right. There's more. So we have Ash Emily remotely. If you want to unmute.
Ms. Brandalini, let me help you here real quick. If you would love to unmute, you most certainly can right now. Let's try that one more time. There you go. Just state your name and address and go ahead with your comment. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Tom Esch, we have a fifth grader at Cushing and wanted to share some thoughts with respect to this issue. First and foremost, I applaud the school committee for being as open and clear in their communication as they have been. I would encourage everybody to take the time to read what's actually in the legislation and what's in the framework, which my wife and I happen to think is, is, is quite excellent. I think it would be a mistake to rely on whatever sort of third-party information people may draw on from online. But that's neither here nor there. What I think is, is so important about the framework is that it's inclusive. It is not merely heteronormative. I think that it's incredibly important for a number of students and families to see themselves in this curriculum. And I would hope that conversation moving forward is, is based in that reality. It's medically factual, it's relevant, and it's incredibly important to any number of folks in Situate and elsewhere. But of course, we're concerned with our town. So there's all of that. I think that the opt-out piece, of course, is important. You know, recently, for other reasons, in our experience at Cushing, there were activities at the school that if people wanted to opt out, they could opt out, and some did. And I, I think it's very clear from what Assistant Superintendent Driscoll has just said that, that all of those things have been in place and there's no reason to think they won't be moving forward. Thanks for the, the opportunity to comment.
Right, thank you. I'll go back to in-person if anyone else is interested.
Kirk Gunther took your place. I have three students in the school system. You can see him. I echo Tom. I think that reading this, that I think you're fooling yourself if you don't understand, you know, the inclusive body of it in terms of we're all different. You know, we've, my wife and I tell her older boys of 13 and 16 that, you know, there's a lot of different people. You have to accept them, respect. And respect works both ways. So, you know, I'm actually, most of this framework I'm in support of. I think for all parents, the one thing that raised a red flag was DESI categorized 11- to 13-year-olds as middle schoolers. I think that was a push. I don't think our 11- and 12-year-olds are middle schoolers here. For instance, I have a 10-year-old, 11-year-old who's in fifth grade. She's, that's an elementary school. So she's 11. She's not a middle schooler. I think that's the one thing I just wanted, for caregivers and parents, that kind of caught my eye was some of the sexual relative education they brought up was, you know, readiness for intercourse and human reproduction. I, I think personally, that should be a decision of the parent. And like the last speaker just said, if you don't think your individual child at 11 or 12 is ready for that, you should opt out. Others should have the right to keep them in the class. And obviously, is it Assistant Principal? Sorry. What's that?
Assistant Superintendent.
So sorry, Assistant Superintendent. Sorry. I think she cleared that up with the opt-out. And I, I, again, I think it's individual basis as a parent or guardian. If you don't feel your son or daughter is quite mature enough for that yet, and they're all different in terms of nurturing, that's when you'd use the opt-out. So that's really, and also, I think the communication moving forward, I've been listening online, is yeah, let people know. I think this is a huge framework. I would have liked probably, like you talked about at your CSAT chats, maybe to have a more open forum on it. But you know, it's really responsible for people to read it. You can only do so much of those open forum chats. But that's really all I wanted to say was kind of at the younger age, it's more of an individual readiness instead of a group readiness. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Looking virtually again, I have Jamie Jacomozy.
Hi, Jamie Jacomozy, 19.
Jamie, we lost you.
Sorry, can you hear me?
Cut out for a second there. We heard you just, just after you stated your name, you cut out first.
Okay. I'm 19, Youth Homes Drive, and I have two Kins and Wamputuck and one in the high school. Um, my comment is completely off-topic, I think. But I just realized on Friday that we are the only school district in the South Shore and further that have school on November 10. And I'm not expecting a calendar change or anything. But I was wondering if when we decided to schedule school on Veterans Day observed, if there was any consideration for teachers who are veterans or students that have family members who are veterans, that maybe they can be excused from that day?
That's. Sorry. You all set, Jamie?
Yeah, yeah, thank you.
Thank you for that comment. You know, Janice and I actually had a conversation about this recently. You know.
We just didn't realize.
Yeah. Yeah, the, the technical observation day happens to fall on a Saturday per the state. You know, holidays and observance, if it's on a Saturday, that we're not required. Is what does required mean? We shouldn't do it because it's the right thing to do? So I, I hear you. I don't think we. Yeah, I agree. We, I think that's a valid future agenda item and future as in near future as it is approaching quite quickly. So thank you. All right. Any other in-person folks desiring public comment opportunity? All right, we'll go back to our virtual folks here. We have Pat Wade. You are all set.
Pat Wade, if you want to go ahead with your name, address, or school you're associated with? I'm going to ask you one more time to unmute. You may not.
We're both clicking it now that I figured.
Pat Wade, you should be good.
All right, we are unable to hear you or having a technical difficulty. Please feel free to email me at nbrandolini@sit.org if you wish to send your comments my way. That's completely fine. We will go to, or unless that can be fixed in the next few minutes, that's also fine. Mary Kay Heinz. You are unmuted.
Mary Kay Heinz, you should be able to speak. You go ahead if you are, if you can hear us and you just name, address, and your comment. Not sure.
Two, two people. That makes me think there's a technical issue, obviously.
Doesn't make it safe.
All right.
You do have another hand raised. Maybe we try Ms. Withrow.
Let's go to Lori Withrow.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Oh, good. I can't turn on my video, so that's still not working. Lori, 62 and Vinyl Road. I'm going to switch subjects to MCAS. I know it's on the agenda this evening. And I took a little look myself on the, on the numbers that were posted online. And I'm still a little bit, I don't know what the word I'm going to use is, but a little concerned about where we're falling this past year. I know with the COVID years in the past three years or so that we've talked about COVID being an issue and some of the learning during that time. But compared, still comparing to some of the other local towns around us, it's still a little bit concerning. So I would rather have spoken after the presentation tonight, but because of where public comment is, I just wanted to just say, I hope that we can ask some questions and find out what the plan is and how we are going to continue to get those numbers up for the next years and going forward. But I appreciate you all and thank you very much.
All right, thank you, Lori. And if you have any questions after any of the presentations, please do reach out to anyone that you need to in terms of additional information, be it teachers or Assistant Superintendent Driscoll.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Anyone who was having any sort of technical difficulties? Give you a second, but if those two individuals.
They're just driving it.
Okay. All right. Yes.
Okay, great. Sorry about that. Technical difficulties. I just wanted to join, oh, sorry, Mary Kay Heinz. I have two sons who recently graduated from the high school, one in 2021 and the other just in June 2023. We are on Cornet Stetson Road. I am extremely encouraged by the conversations this evening. I just want to say that I agree with everyone who has presented with regard to the DESI guidelines. I think it is incredibly important, though, that everyone take the time and make the effort to read the guidelines themselves. There is a lot of misinformation being presented. And I think everybody needs to establish the actual facts presented in the guidelines before making a decision with regard to them. And I look forward to additional agenda items discussing this topic going forward. Thank you.
Thank you so much. I would agree with that. I would encourage everyone to read through. Absolutely. Okay. All right. I don't see that other person that was having trouble connecting. So with that said, we will move forward from public comment. All right, we have something exciting here. Our student representatives from Situate High School joining us tonight. We have Mr. David Murphy here coming up. And Louisa Kinsey is unable to attend tonight, so we'll look forward to seeing her future meetings. But you have the mic, so welcome. We are very, very happy to have you with us.
Thank you. So hello, everyone. My name is David Murphy. I'm a senior at SHS. And first of all, I just wanted to express how honored and grateful I am to be here tonight. I'm really excited to report to all of you throughout the next year about the ongoings at SHS. But with that said, I guess I'll get going. So to start things off, start things off strong. SHS had our annual This Is Our House rally on Friday, September 22. The DEI Director Jamal Adams did a fantastic job motivating our school community. Students created live art that they displayed, read poems, and a band played. It spread a really positive message, was super fun, and as a firsthand eyewitness of the event, the energy was amazing. So thank you, Mr. Adams, for your hard work. In addition to This Is Our House, Homecoming Spirit Week was last week. There was a very high student participation, and without a doubt in mind, the best day by far was Sailor Spirit Day, with Barbie and Kenday running close second. The SHS block party was also on Friday, September 29, before, before a great homecoming football game win over Pembroke. Despite the shabby weather, SHS's student body made their presence well-known at both these events. The week also finished off strong with Saturday's Homecoming Dance, where our exemplary senior sailors were chosen. Congratulations to Kelsey Lee and Emma Braun. Congratulations to Kelsey Lee and Emma Braun for being chosen as the SHS class of twenty twenty-four senior sailors. The school also welcomed twenty-three Spanish students from the Basque Country in Spain. They spent two weeks with Citro families and went on daily excursions like visiting Harvard University and Fenway Park. We are delighted to have had this opportunity to host these exchange students and introduce them as a part of our Citro community. On top of all this, the administration has been working closely with the principal leadership council to improve attendance and a positive culture at SHS. Attendance has been greatly improving throughout these first few weeks and is only going to get better from here. The select choir also did an outstanding job on September twenty-first at the Massachusetts Coalition of Police Annual Convention, where they were asked to sing the National Anthem. Moving on to our sports teams, everyone has been playing top this season. A particular shout-out goes to varsity boys golf, who has had an amazing season so far, winning ten meets with only two very narrow losses. We're excited to hear the, how they do today against Whitman Hansen. Another highlight should go to the varsity football and girls soccer teams, which had decisive wins against Pembroke, as stated before, and Plymouth South respectively last Friday. So far, varsity football this year has gone two and two and varsity girls soccer two, four, two. Moving on to our other teams, varsity boys soccer has gone two, four, two this season, boys cross country oh and two, girls cross country two and oh, volleyball six and four, and girls field hockey six, four and one. We're excited to see all these teams compete as their seasons carry on. We've also begun having college visits, which have offered SHS students excellent opportunities to learn more about some amazing schools. We've had over thirty visits scheduled for this fall, including schools like WPI, Boden, UVM and more. Counseling also had college workshops last week to help students make process or progress on college applications. It offered important guide, guidance for students working through a complicated college process, helping them keep informed and up to date on deadlines and required information. Lord knows I needed it. Furthermore, SHS will be hosting PSATs on October seventeenth for tenth graders and eighteen, and the eighteenth for eleventh graders. Financial aid night will also take place tomorrow on October third at six thirty in the Performing Arts Center. It is open to all SHS families and students who would benefit from hearing about the college financial aid process. There will also be a college scoop night on October tenth, also in the pack, where all SHS students and fa, uh, and families can learn more about the ins and outs of the college admissions process. The panel presentation will include admissions officers from Babson College, EC, WPI, Suffolk University, Curry College and UMass Amherst. So with that being said, I think we're done. Thank you all for putting up with this long-winded report, but even more so, thank you for having me here tonight. I know I've said it before, but it truly is an honor to be here and I'm excited to see you all again on October twenty-third. Please let me know if you have any questions and I will want to leave it.
Well, thank you very much. We appreciate you being here as well. Right. Any questions for? Sounds good. All right. New business. We have some field trips. Good stuff going on here. So, um, Mr. Thomas. I don't see you. Who's doing your show instead? Not gonna lie, this one has those. People are interested in me, so, oh, yeah.
Um, yeah, my name's Evan Gresho. I'm one of the high school music teachers. And we're just, we're proposing a, to go back to Disney World. Um, it's been a long time. Like, we had a, a twenty twenty trip planned and then it turned into a large saga of refunds and things like that.
Remember that.
So now we have the energy again to try it one more time. Um, so we did share, um, kind of an outline of what our expectations were and kind of what the expected trip would be and the trip dates with you. I hope you received those. Um, so I was hoping we just kind of, if you had any questions about the trip itself, um, I'd be here to answer them.
Okay, thank you so much. Any questions here?
Hi, so if I'm reading this correctly, it's all covered, all the costs are covered by the the estimated costs and is the PTO covering that?
Oh, um.
Or how much is it?
We, we, we've gotten some quotes so far, um, or expecting some quotes actually from, we kind of rounded up to three different travel agencies to kind of get the best one. Um, so we're still kind of waiting for like the exact cost, um, for all three. Um, we got a couple in today. And the kids have funded and we've found some fundraising opportunities, of course. But we, we don't, we don't have a ballpark price yet either.
Oh, okay. I was like, oh, that's great.
That movie.
All right. That's good. I feel like I should, I, you sort of feel like I should stay. Okay, we'll take a motion on Walt Disney World. I'm not even looking at you, Janice.
I make a motion to approve the out-of-state field trip from April twenty-fourth to through April twenty-ninth, twenty twenty-four to Walt Disney World in Orlando, Florida for approximately a hundred Citro High School band and choir students.
Second. Right, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you. We'll get to work now.
Very exciting. All right, Mr. Maki with, uh, DECA field trip. Hello.
Hey guys, good evening. Um, my name is Ross Pack. I'm a business teacher here at, uh, Citro High School. Um, so thank you, school committee members and superintendent Rook. I can actually give you an update for boys soccer. We tied today, so we're two, four and three now.
Maybe one, maybe one.
Oh, nice. Excellent. Um, um, okay. Um, so I had sent ahead of time the, um, just the write-up or the informational letter regarding um, our district competition for DECA and, um, just real brief, uh, DECA is an opportunity for our business students, um, who are DECA members within the school to, um, take what they're learning up in the classroom and then apply it to a competition academic setting. Um, this year we're holding the competition at the Seacrest in Falmouth. Um, previously it's been at the Marriott Quincy, um, but we're negotiating, um, really with Seacrest Resort and Resorts now because the Marriott dates weren't conducive to, um, the only dates they were going to give us was the week after Thanksgiving, which would be tough for schools to turn around. Um, in our district that we compete with, there is fourteen other high schools. And I don't have a final price for the per student cost. We're still negotiating with just incidentals such as food, um, and like AV equipment with the Seacrest. Um, I'm actually the new district chairperson for our district for DECA now because I think I'm just the oldest and the most experienced now. I just dominated it for it. So, um, so we're in the latter stages of that. Um, I would say that it's not going to cost any more than it did last year, which was one eighty-five per student. And it looks like it might be a little bit cheaper, um, with the Seacrest and those dates are the seventh of seven through the eighth, which was perfect for us. Um, I think we're looking at roughly about sixty to seventy students that are on the final count right now. Students are, um, registered during this week, the portal opened, um, for DECA membership registration for our chapter and then we'll move on to, um, but typically it's right around sixty to seventy and I'll have that number updated, um, for assistant superintendent, um, personal. Um, I don't know if you have some questions from me? I mean, I can just keep talking about DECA.
I'm just a DECA member myself, so I don't have any questions.
Oh, nice.
But it's phenomenal. I think it's amazing that you have almost sixty kids that are going to do this.
Yeah. Um, we're trying to get the number up. So the students are really geared up this year and, um, it's funny, in our DECA marketing class, um, one of the year-long initiatives they've taken on as one of their projects is, um, to do some fundraising and they're going to host, um, a couple of different student-run like tournaments. I know cornhole is going to be one and I feel like there was another one. I can't remember what it is, but they're going to work through that and, um, and that's going to be some of their fundraising they're going to do. Uh, most of that fundraiser will probably go to our state competition because that's, that one gets a little more expensive as we qualify to that next level. So, um, but it's fun to see the kids are excited about it and um, they promised me that our number is going to get higher than, um, last year. So, yeah, they're really, um, taking on the initiative. They do a great job, so.
Excellent. No other questions? We'll take a motion on technical.
I make a motion to approve the overnight field trip from December seventh through December eighth, twenty twenty-three to Seacrest Resort in Falmouth, Mass for approximately sixty Citro High School students.
Okay, if I can find this for Poske. Any, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
All right. Principal BD, Camp Bourndale.
Good evening. Thanks for having us tonight or meeting tonight. Uh, we are, I am here to propose a field trip to Camp Bourndale. Uh, this would be the thirty-fifth year Citro public schools would be attending Camp Bourndale. It's a longstanding tradition. We go for many different reasons, for social reasons, for academic reasons. Uh, and the biggest piece is just it really helps kids to develop self-confidence, uh, resiliency, time away from home for the first time, uh, develop friendships. The curriculum Camp Bourndale offers is aligned with the Massachusetts State Standards for Grade Six Science. Um, and so oftentimes our students go and they learn new things and get to experience new things, uh, that they have read about in a science class at Gates, uh, but they get to have that hands-on experience in the camp setting. We are looking to go, uh, the week of April twenty-second through April twenty-sixth with Team A, and that's approximately a hundred ten students. And then the following week, April twenty-ninth through May third, uh, going with Team B and that's the other, uh, two hundred ten students. The approximate cost is five hundred fifty dollars per student this year. Uh, we will be doing two fundraising opportunities for students to, uh, participate in in order to subsidize the cost of their trip. So they will be selling wrapping paper and all, all the events. Uh, we've also partnered with, uh, Citro Community Christmas in the past and they are very generous and support students in need for funding for this opportunity. So those are the dates, uh, costs and our reasons.
Thank you so much. A motion on Bourndale. Both Bourndales. Um, can I just ask a question? Of course. Sorry about that. I.
I'm so excited about this. I am a sixth grader. I love this idea and everything it stands for. I guess I am a little curious about, um, how many things we have that put a cost on a child's daily. Um, and I don't know if we keep track of that. I appreciate that there are fundraising opportunities. Obviously, Citro Community Christmas is amazing, but I, I'm just curious, if there are other, if, if this might just be something to think about or talk about, um, as we go forward, because there are so many awesome opportunities and I think about families with more than one child, you know, this is a big financial commitment on top of that. I assume you need some equipment and things that might not be regularly found around the house, things like that. I send my own kids to summer camp, so I know a little of that, sleeping bags and whatnot. Um, so as I said, I completely support this. I'm thrilled for all of these kids and for the thirty-five years we've been doing it, but it's just a question I have as someone who's relatively new to this school. I thought I would just surface for maybe later discussion.
I always started with the cost. There are all the trips that we approved. I mean, I want these kids to have these opportunities, but again, we want all the kids to have, to be able to take part.
Yeah, I agree. Yeah, so I, I, you know, I know we have PTOs and we have, you know, school budgets and things like that. It's just something that I would love to look into as we continue to say yes to awesome opportunities for our kids that of course we all want. And that's not particular to Bourndale. It's just, I was thinking while everyone else was speaking for your, your stuff.
On that note, I'm happy to make the motion. And I think we have two. They have to be separate.
Yeah, I would ask that too. Like, I think you're right. I don't know. I mean, my oldest is a freshman, so we're kind of, we had Bourndale and now we do Disney and all that, but I would imagine that it gets more complicated because the trips are centralized towards mostly high schoolers. So uh, maybe that's like great feedback to get from a high school level, you know, um, besides Bourndale, middle school trips are pretty handled, I would. Yes.
This is, uh, typically the only.
Yeah.
Uh, it's definitely the only overnight trip, but it's also sixth grade. I, we do typically one field trip per grade per year. The seventh grade goes to the dump, uh, so I'm not about that, so.
Great. Looking forward to that.
Yeah.
Oh, yes.
Yeah, 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 yeah. That was pretty affordable.
Yes.
But it's still, nonetheless, for your point, that's a great.
Yeah.
Yes.
I like the dump trip, but maybe they should go to the board dump where they're down.
Sure.
Philosophically, um, for all our trips, especially ones with costs, I think it's a real good point is that, uh, no child would not be able to participate because of cost. And I do think it, it's something that we need to look at overall and over the course of time, what's the cost of the families does pile up. And then you have the fundraising fatigue on the community. If you're always doing fundraisers and, and, you know, we're talking about before the meeting that, you know, as a parent, I remember you said, I'm not going to go out, so I'll take it. Here's the twenty bucks worth. So it does get costly for parents, grandparents, caregivers, so, we'll definitely pay attention to that. It's a great point. So, thank you. But no child will not go because of cost.
Thank you. Someone down there doesn't. So do them separately and we vote on each individually? All right. So I'm going to make a motion to approve the overnight field trip from April twenty-second to April twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-four to Camp Bourndale for grade six students at the Lester J. Gates Middle School.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Make a motion to approve the overnight field trip from April twenty-ninth to May third, twenty twenty-four to Camp Bourndale for grade six students at the Lester J. Gates Middle School.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Right. Second iteration of surplus. We have the elementary school from, uh, with, uh, Dr. Rep.
Thank you. Meteors chair members of the committee, you'll see as we start going through the process of the new school, faculty, pushing, it's important that we start to clean. And so this will be the first list of many that you'll be seeing over the next couple of years. Um, halfway they went through, they looked for classrooms and really came up with a list of books that are either, um, no longer used and been replaced by more current curriculum or just simply, um, worn out. And similar to the request from two weeks ago, we'll do the same thing. We'll look to give away anything that we can give away. We'll look to sell what we can sell. Um, but this is the first step of the process. I won't read the two pages.
No problem. Thank you so much. All right. Uh, any questions on the surplus? Anyone? All right, I'll take a motion.
I'll make a motion. I make a motion to declare the items listed on memorandum dated September twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-three surplus. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Right, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, uh, review of our twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three school committee goals. I will share my screen. All right. So here are our, all right, this is a brand new computer, so bear with me. Uh, here are our twenty twenty-two, twenty-three goals that Carrie and I worked pretty hard to compile together. So just a quick sort of, it's a best practice for us to review this and just, you know, looking to get committee feedback on our student achievement goal here. Um, all right. So just looking at our student achievement goal here, we sort of focus mostly on social emotional learning with this one. And any comments on this? I mean, I have mine, but I was gonna let you guys go first. Are we like updating these?
Yes.
Right, right. So are there things on this that you feel are accomplished or? I'm not sure. All right. So maybe I should review that first. Sorry, Maria, for the lack of sort of introduction. So what we're gonna do right now is just take a quick, quick look at these. It's a year goal process, so we're looking at our student goal here first. And the question at hand is, are we on track with this? Did we meet this goal? Are there, you know, what do we, what are our next steps here? And you'll see, especially with our kind of professional practice goals and our district improvement goals, that some of these are multi-year goals clearly. So when you look at the MSBA project, this is an ongoing goal that will transfer from year to year until the project is complete. But the, within the goal, some of the details on what the next steps for us will change from year to year. So, you know, also keeping in mind that when Carrie and I put this together, we were looking forward to our new strategic plan. And this was sort of a transitional year to have some focus in some of these areas as we waited for that to come together collaboratively with the district and the community and such. So
can I make a
Yes.
suggestion potentially?
Yep.
So first, I just wanna be sure, these are publicly available for folks who wanna review them. So I just wanna remind that they're on the website if people at home can't see them or they're too small. So just if people are interested, they could look at these. I was wondering if whomever decides to be on this subcommittee to work on these, perhaps that group of two, because of our size, could do a sort of quick review first, like propose, like bring to whatever meeting is next to do this, bring sort of a recap of what we think we've accomplished.
Yep.
Rather than try to do it here, because I feel like I need some time to talk about it. And then that committee could then propose, based on what they found, propose amendments or changes to goals.
Sure.
And then we could have a discussion then, maybe? I just feel like I need more time to prepare. Yeah, even though I read them, I just feel like, oh, that's fine.
Okay, I'm fine with that. The rest of the committee is good with that too. Okay, great. Just wanted to make sure we got it on our agenda and we're actively working on this. So that's absolutely fine and fair. So I would propose that we have our tiny subcommittee of two work on this per Dr. Burkowski's recommendations. Does anyone in particular feel excited about goals like me?
Just did the work, I feel like obligated to, to volunteer. So I'm happy to work on it if someone else. And just to clarify for folks listening, the reason the group is so small at two is because just by numbers, we are a small committee and open meeting laws require that we can't have more than two people meeting without it being public. So that's the reason. Does anybody wanna help me with the work? I mean, I'll give it.
I'm happy to do it again, but I didn't want it if anybody else was interested.
I mean, I can work on it by myself and then ask somebody to give me some feedback if you, if nobody's really interested in it. And I know you're already working on the subcommittee for the policy, so it's fine.
I'll give it up.
Okay, okay.
But if you wanna spearhead, I will.
That's fine, I can start it and get your feedback.
Excellent, all right, that'll be great. Yep.
So would you like us to look through these as well and just email you?
That would be great.
Send them to me.
Any feedback?
Okay, yeah. That'd be great, everybody could do that.
Yeah, keeping in mind, MSBA is likely an ongoing.
Yeah.
So any suggestions, go forward to Carrie. That's it, great. Probably similarly, our school committee protocols with we spend like so long. I'm going.
And Maria and I haven't had a chance to get together and discuss them, so there's no update at this time. Oh, we have policies.
Yeah, that's okay. All right, so that's another update you think you'll be ready by October 23 for that or something. Again, that was sort of more of a review, not necessarily that there needs to be an update. It was more, again, a best practice to go through that and see if there, if you thought there should be. I just don't like documents sitting for three, four, five years stale on a website. That's not the intention. All right, thank you very much. Leadership report, Superintendent Burkett.
Thank you very much. Good evening, everyone. Today I'm gonna talk about, segue, the Cushing Hathley new building project. Make sure that's front and center on people's purview. This has been a lot happening and things are happening quickly. And it will be a vote this spring. So I think it's important that we talk about this in every meeting, update folks, and continue to update our website and direct people there for updated information. So I'm gonna give a little brief summary on what we've done to date, of what we did last week, what milestone we reached, and what's upcoming. So upon the successful conclusion of the procurement of the Orange Project Management and Design Services, the district and its team collaborated with the MSBA to document our educational program, which was a really big undertaking, obviously generate an initial space summary, document existing conditions for both buildings, establish design parameters, develop and evaluate alternatives, which is renovations and such, and recommend the most cost-effective and educational appropriate preferred solution to the MSBA board of directors for their consideration. So basically, what this is called is going from the many to the few to the one. So of course, the last year, we've been doing that. We started off with, I think, over 30 options, looked at all of them through board meetings, subcommittee meetings, public meetings, feedback. And I am proud of the fact that the committee has been listening to the input of the visionary committee that was formed, all stakeholders in the district. The thought exchange survey that went out to the entire community was well participated in and all the feedback as we went into public meetings. And it's evolved to what I believe to be a beautiful building. And now the rubber hits the road. Last week, we attended the MSBA, which stands for Mass School Building Authority, for those new to the process. Attended the MSBA Facilities Assessment Subcommittee, FAS. And they need to hear our presentation with our architect and OPM on the project and provide feedback to us based on that update, our one choice. And thought it went extremely well. In fact, the OPM called me afterwards, who's done many of these, and said it was one of the best he's seen and best feedback that he's seen in many years. So don't think he says that to anyone, but if he does, it's good for business, I guess. I bought it, but I'll share because I was there. And I know Ms. Brinleavy was there too, so feel free to chime in. I'll just go over some of the things that were, some of the notes from the meeting that actually the MSBA sent. These aren't mine, these are theirs. You'll hear the word appreciation from the MSBA, which is nice to hear. So some of the things we recovered in that meeting. Appreciation of the updated educational program and the district's response to comments. So when we did the educational programming, it's been a long process. It's been a back and forth with the MSBA. They took a red pen to it, sent it back, questions and answers, a lot of work. I think we've handled that very well and they were very pleased with the product. Explanation of location of the building in relation to floodplain, residential properties, site topography, associated drainage considerations, site circulation, location of PK, parking and drop off. Really huge, because right now we have the PK drop off after the kids. It'll be nice to have everybody at the same time. It's safely done in enough space for circulation and not back up on the main road. So traffic is a big piece of this study, so it's good to get that feedback and that they noticed that we're paying special attention to all facets of parking, including the PK parking. Clarification associated with location and use, the number of elevators, proposed locations of the media center and administration offices. Verification on how the media center will be staffed and operated. Adaptive PE, an opportunity to provide partial separation for students with gym while the gym is in use. So we talked about special education needs as well. Make sure we had ample programming space for all students. Use and maintenance of proposed courtyards. If you haven't seen any of the models yet, this model has two courtyards, so it's important. And those are for learning and for play. They're appropriated by the younger kids who are down one in the building with K through two and then three through five up here. So those will look very different, which is really cool. And it provides a safe environment. We talked a lot about safety in these meetings. Courtyard model, we went and visited a school in Rock and the head courtyard model is absolutely beautiful and the things they were able to do out there. So some of their questions were important. How do you maintain it? How do you keep the snow, you know, cleaned up and in there and stuff? And typically what you do is you do some hardscape with turf and things like that, so that you're not mowing it and that kind of stuff. So a lot of talk about that, but the opportunity to have outside learning opportunities. The cool thing about the building setup is that there's no classrooms that abut that those courtyards, which is our major problem now with our gyms abutting classrooms, which hopefully those architects are still around and not deployed. Or the superintendent, so maybe they'll say this about me in 20 years. Appreciation of the site plan and illustration of landscape zones. So they were very impressed with that. That includes outside landscape and consideration for safety, parking, place spaces for all the kids and all the ages, combinations for all children. All those things were ranked well. Maintenance considerations for the trails and outdoor learning areas, as well as opportunities to use the hardscape. A little bit overlapped there, but also the possibility of some trails that, beautiful landscape out there and the possibilities of doing some nature walks and things for outside education were also discussed. Intentional design and use of the proposed breakout spaces and considerations for younger learners, such as supervision. So in this model, what makes a little visionary is there's opportunities within the classrooms to break out, spill it into separate areas into either the hallway or connections to the classroom, which is really unique and cool. So it's important that those be supervised with the younger kids. That was talked about, to make sure we had that. And the benefit, finally, the benefits for the design team of working with the district to understand and incorporate feedback from their previous building project. So they were, they were, were in feedback on the Gates project, how that was going. And there was a good conversation about pros and cons of that, mostly pros, obviously, and they appreciated that feedback as well. Good. So for upcoming meetings, we have a school building committee meetings on Wednesday, October 18. That's the next one at 5:30 PM. They are held here in the Library Harbor Conference Room and they're open to the public. We also have our next public meeting, Wednesday, December 6, at 6:30 PM. And Hathley will surely get plenty of information out to folks in advance of that. And we've worked really hard on setting up a special place on the website that we encourage people to go, which can cut, which basically has everything, all the meeting notes, videos of meetings, you name it, we have it, the why behind this, all the facts we can muster. And then we recently posted the frequently asked questions. Now that we've had enough public feedback, so we're hoping that educates some folks on it. So we encourage you to go to sit.org, S-C-I-T dot org. And you simply hit the community link and there'll be an option there for the MSBA project. We have a whole section just for that. And we're also taking feedback on that, so if you're a community member, parent caregiver that has feedback that on things we can do better for that and inform people better, that's the whole goal. I just encourage people to, you know, like we talked about the framework, that's obviously extremely important for folks to read and stay up to speed on, and so is this new project for the community. I encourage people to get educated on it, look up and reach out with any questions. We're happy to meet with anybody, talk with anybody on it. We're proud of it, we have ways to go and wanna make this the best for our kids. Thank you. One last thing, I'm sorry. And what's happening between now and the building committee meeting, just so folks know that the, the architects are meeting with our staff, entire staff have the opportunity now that we've chosen one design to start putting some meat to the bone, if you will. And what's the classroom gonna really look like? What benefits you as an educator? Now that we see this, so they come with the shell of the building and are able to put in. We have the practitioners actually giving feedback on them while then it starts to come alive and really become what the school's gonna look like over the next few months. So that'll be happening this, this next two weeks. Thank you, I'll take any questions.
Thank you, Superintendent. Thank you, Superintendent Burkett.
That's all right. No, thank you very much for that report. I think it's, from my perspective, there's so much work going on. I just feel like I'm not necessarily involved as much as I usually like to be. So thank you for all your efforts for doing this. So, but that being said, I have a, just a question. I know it's come up a while ago, just general references, but at what point do you think we or the committee will come up with potential, I guess, cost to run the building from a staffing and utilities perspective? Just so, it was going, I know we're going over some history about things that happened, you know, 10, 15 years ago and that I think the town, probably Ms. Hunt probably remembers better than anyone, that we built a new school and we didn't budget for staffing. So I know this is a very different situation, but I'm just curious if at any, at what point maybe we look at it and say, we're going to increase our cost of staffing or decrease, or just an idea of where we may stand. But I know that we're going from four to three schools, so I wouldn't expect that we might, I don't think we would increase it. But just, I think there needs to be something there to say, we're gonna increase cost by this or we're gonna decrease it, just so that we're not surprised by whatever may come our way.
That's a great point, Mrs. Gates. We've been talking about that already, like anticipating enrollment numbers, looking, when we combine that number, approximately 460 students, what staffing will need, administration, those types of things. Well, in, you know, redistricting is gonna come up eventually when we get closer and seeing where kids are going to other schools and maybe some of those teachers, maybe have to be placed in another building, those types of things. So as we get closer, we'll have better understanding of those costs. Those will be operational costs, similar to the cost of the entire building. It will have to wait till we get a little bit closer, but I don't see it increasing. It may save us some, you know, money. We won't, certainly, I don't think, anticipate cutting positions, but in a sec, it may, for example, you'll have two principals. Like the year that you won't have as much administrative costs. But there's other things we have to look at, the company nurses will be needing, the school being bigger, right? For example, if you're Hathley, you've had one nurse, now you've got 460 students. Do we have two nurses? Do we have one and a half? We have retirements that year. But I think to point back to the mistake that was made before, we have to have that in our operational budget at least a year ahead, if not longer. So Dr. Rab and I have been talking about that. We've been talking about that with the OPM and the architects. So that will be part of this whole process. We'll have those numbers for you in advance. Thank you.
Welcome.
I haven't been on the mics today.
It's working now, sorry. This might be premature also, but I'm curious. Obviously, with a new building, you'll have lots of advantages of sort of environmental pieces in terms of new equipment. But I'm wondering when and if there are gonna be conversations around cool environmental opportunities like incorporating rain barrels and sort of how do you integrate more natural settings into the sort of, you know, concrete of the, of the building? Because I think from a learning standpoint, and we have farmer, we have already had partnerships with farms and environmental places. And so like, what does that conversation look like and when do those things start being imagined, I guess?
That's a great question. We, in fact, it's good timing. We just started recently, last month, I believe, started our first sustainability subcommittee. So there is a subcommittee of community members, some outside of the committees who are involving other professionals, if you will, that were really interested. We put the word out, we got some great folks in that, they had their first meeting. So those be specifically talking about those things, as well as there's opportunities for us as a district to go for more reimbursement, more advanced and more green the building is. So there's multiple options. So those would be, the subcommittee will feed into the building committee to talk about those on a larger scale as well. So that's already started.
Thank you.
Welcome.
Other talks about air conditioning? What, other talks about air conditioning as an option?
Condition air.
Condition air. I'm sure that it's come up, I was just, yeah.
Yeah, all of it.
Upset, yes.
Actually, that was one of the big, one of the big feedback points from the MSBA meeting was about the consideration of bringing the outside elements in and vice versa and really sort of capitalizing on the beautiful Cituit landscape that exists naturally and honoring it and preserving it and enhancing it. So they were really impressed by the architect team and Cituit team. That, that obviously came from feedback from community members and parents and everyone, even the kids during visioning. That was exactly what their boards looked like. They wanted more, more of that entirely. So it was really great to see that come together.
If I just might end on that all the educational programming and this great stuff we're doing with this building, we wanna try to replicate that in all the other buildings. Certainly as best we can, but I think, you know, a lot of the stuff we can't. And they won't necessarily have all the new additions and things like that, but they do have the space. If we do new educational programming, we wanna make sure that that's appreciated by all our students and all schools.
Thank you for mentioning that. It's really important too. Superintendent Burkett, I'm wondering if, I know you said December for the next public meeting. Superintendent Burkett, I'm wondering if, I know you said December for the next public meeting. Could we add at our school committee meeting, even if it's you or me and we kind of go over some of the, some of the details and show some more, you know, the design pictures and bring that in as much as we can.
Yeah. And in fact, if, whenever you want, if you want the next meeting, we could bring in the architects again, the OPM, we're paying them.
Sure.
And they can come in with us and do another presentation, give you all an update on, we've spent a while, right? Since they've come into actual, so we can put that on the agenda for the next meeting if you want.
Sure. That'd be wonderful. Thank you. It's hard to attend some of those, you know, for people, I, you know, understandably so, school building meetings.
And I'm just reading a few, you know, paragraphs here, and I know it's tough for people to go and read back year and a half now of notes and all that. So maybe if we bring them in and have a current updated conversation with visuals and then post that, I think that will be this great idea.
Yeah, that'd be great. Thank you. All right, we are moving forward to Assistant Superintendent Driscoll's summary.
Thanks for having me. Is this okay? Take some notes while I'm presenting. If you have any questions. What I am doing today is a district overview. So I know a lot of people want to know about details of their individual schools and all of the elementaries. What happens is I do this overview for the district and then each principal does their own work with their faculty and their school councils. School council's primary responsibility is to drive that school improvement plan. So I would recommend anybody who wants that nitty gritty information at the school level to attend a school council meeting. Okay. So this will look similar to last year's because anything we looked at last year, I brought back this year so that we could make sure that we are comparing the same thing. These are a couple of notes, even though at this point, we like to think a pandemic is totally in the past. It's important to know that for our 10th graders, when we look at our accountability chart, they have, they're judged by an all students group and then a lowest performing students group, and that's based on more than one test. So our 10th grade students had not taken a full MCAST since grade six. So they had no tests, then they had a half test. So we don't have that for the high school and that's the same across the state. And here are some summary notes. Our grade three students, school should remain cautious when they look about those incoming grade three students across the state, not just in Situate, because those are the students who had pre-K and K during the pandemic. So those kids, when they had their first full year of in-person school, they were first graders, which is a very steep curve not to have that traditional kindergarten experience. When we look at our charts, like Laura Mithro mentioned, she was looking at the data online. When we look at our absenteeism on our accountability chart, we got a lot of higher scores for improvements, but it is important that even though there are improvements, the overall attendance rates are actually not good. And it's, we have to address that at all buildings. So again, just because there was an improvement doesn't necessarily mean it's a marked achievement. This is the first time that the full accountability system has been run since 2019. So last year we did get an accountability percentile for every single school. But this year, so an accountability percentile, I know you've heard us talk about this before. This is our school in relation to like schools across the state. The closer to 100, the better. But this year they brought back the progress towards targets and that is the school against itself. So that means did the school make progress on each area that we are held accountable for by the state? And some schools, none of ours, got some federal designations about needing support and things like that. But we did have a school of recognition. There are only 66 school of recognitions in the state and Jenkins Elementary is one of them. So I saw Mary on here. Congratulations to Mary and her staff, the teachers, the staff, the bus drivers, the, every single person who made that happen. And we're going to talk about some of the numbers that make, that puts schools into that ranking. So what do we care about as a district? So first I'd like to say what we care about as a district is our, our students. I mean, that's our students. That's what we care about first and foremost. But when we're talking about rankings, we care about accountability and percentile rankings. So that means English, math and science achievement, ELA and math growth, graduation dropout and extended engagement rates, that's for the high school, chronic absenteeism, all levels, and for the high school junior and senior advanced coursework. And if there are words that I'm using that's something that you don't know or you want me to pause it, please feel free to interrupt me. So this, even though it's tiny, is our district accountability and this is available on the state website for everyone. If you look at a school, a school has just their own school with all students and lowest performing students. What we are looking at as a district on the left side is non-high school grades, all students. Then our lowest performing students, non-high school grades. The first column is the points that we earned and the second column is the potential points for each area. I have a rubric of, it's a very detailed rubric from the school leaders guide that I can give anyone a hard copy of, anyone. If anyone wants a copy of that, you're welcome to have it. That alone takes some interpreting, but it is useful to understand what these numbers mean according to the ratings. Let's see. So something also that is new this year, all schools do have a percentile ranking, but student groups also have percentile rankings and principals will be looking at those to identify achievement gaps between student groups and all students. So this is something that you have seen now, I think this is the third time I'm sharing this with you. Student growth. This is English average student growth at each school. So this is not by grade level, it is the whole school for anyone who tests. There are five separate categories for growth. Can you make sure I have my extra notes here? And I've color coded it so you can see at a glance where our schools are falling. We need our schools to be in typical growth. So that, that means kids are, as individuals, are growing at the typical pace that we would expect them to grow in skills for English language arts. I'd like to commend Gates for having an upward trend since 2019. So Gates is actually outpacing the growth that it had pre-pandemic. I'd also like to call out Jenkins because Jenkins here, this year, the gray bar is in high growth for ELA. It is very difficult to maintain high growth year after year because once you are high achieving, you have less room to grow. And I, I would like to make sure you give someone a hug from Cushing because they were point one, literally point one away from high growth. So you'll see on their chart, they've got three points, not four, because they are the tippity top of typical growth, but point one more and they would have achieved high growth and earned four points. And these are, these are business rules. They don't allow us to negotiate for our grade growth for a point one. They, they just give us these. So we looked at, we're looking at 2019, 22 and 23, which is the last time that we have had growth. The place where we really need to focus this year is at the high school. Our growth declined at the high school. It's still in typical growth, but it's not going in the direction that we wanted. And now let's look at mathematics. So in mathematics, again, Jenkins is at 66, which is the middle of high growth. Absolutely spectacular. For the most part, our schools are at the higher end of typical growth. Again, Cushing super close for that high growth with their score. Gates has moved in the right direction for mathematics, but they are still at low growth. So that is a huge priority area for our math department as well as Gates itself. Questions about that before I go to the next type?
Just, just a clarifying question, Heidi. This is so for Gates, it's six, seven and eight, but it's the six, seven, eight cohort from each of the last three years that we're generating this growth number from.
Exactly. But achievement is a group of students separately every year. Growth is a student has to have taken the MCAST several times and they look at a range. So if you scored a 500 in seventh grade, then they look at everyone who scored a 500 to see the range. And that's how they come up with growth scores. So when you look at your own child's MCAST scores, you'll see that they have an individual growth score and growth is based on the child and this is an average of all the kids. As opposed to a cohort of here's last year's third grade, here's the next group of kids. All right. So we also get points due to absenteeism, excuse me, due to the lack of chronic absenteeism. We did get four points for most schools in, for the improvement. But for example, in all non-high school, which is elementary and middle, we decreased our chronic absenteeism rate to 10.8. That means almost 11% of our students were absent for about a month. That is unacceptable. That absolutely impacts achievement. And I'm happy that we're going in the right direction, but again, it isn't where we want to be. You'll also notice that in particular student groups, they are substantially higher, which is concerning chronic absenteeism rates.
This is non-high school.
This is non-high. Oh, I'm going to show you.
Why do they separate? Why do you and why did?
I think we're going to highlight the high school.
So, but that is, Peter's question is great though. Why do they separate into non-high school and high school? So when they report accountability data, there's three buckets that they put schools into overall. So that's any school that has grades three through eight tested. No high states. That's one group. Then the next group are schools who have middle school and high school. So let's say I'm a junior, senior high and I have seventh grade to 12th grade. That's a separate group. And then the third group are nine through 12. So we actually have schools in the first group and the last group.
Oh, a question to that. So what about schools that are configured differently with their elementary? Does that factor in at all?
It, it does not.
Okay.
It does not. And you're right, tons of schools have different configurations. They might have, you know, especially at the middle school level. That's why it is all schools for non-high states and then a combination with the high states. You're welcome.
Good.
So this is the high school chronic absenteeism. We are looking at from 20%, and we got points for improving to 15%, but that is unacceptable. And I'm saying here, if I'm absent 18 days, I am a student who has chronic absenteeism. I may have been absent 30 days. This doesn't, you don't lose points the more they're absent. It's that exact cutoff, but that's a huge priority of the high school administration right now. And I think you've heard David mention, they are talking about attendance, they're making it visibly important. It's huge because if kids aren't here, we can't teach them, they can't learn. And again, the, the student groups separately, 20% of our high need students, that's too many.
Just a question. So this has been on the radar, obviously presented about absenteeism, chronic absenteeism last year at this time. I guess maybe not tonight, but love to hear sort of what worked, what's working, what, what next, how to continue. Sort of some more details on chronic absenteeism as its own.
Well, I have some great news. Your policy subcommittee, if I'm not mistaken, will be addressing that in a chat item in make tonight's meeting.
Yeah, that was my real, I was really interested in sort of what are reasons that we're seeing chronic apps? Like what are the reasons that families are giving for students and missing and to what extent can we affect those absenteeisms or not, is what I was thinking about.
So I think, so I just want to address Carrie's question because I think there's a misconception that, well, it's because kids go skiing and that, that's the reason why they're not here. That is not it. We have absolutely patterns, students with some patterns of not attending school. So we have to be in partnerships with those individual families to help those kids so they are in school every day, on time, all day, as much as possible. And I think there's also a misconception about excused absences. There is really no such thing as an excused absence. You miss the day of instruction. So when we look at these numbers, some people may say, well, how many were excused, how many weren't? But I had to, this is just saying these, this is the amount of lost instruction time, which is really important to recognize.
Also curious, comparable to other districts, what their absenteeism looks like, is that even?
Yep. Every, all of these numbers are available on every single district's profile right now. I didn't pull out other districts absenteeism rates. Overall, districts have improved across the state, but it is still not at pre-pandemic levels at all.
Interesting.
Okay. Questions? Okay, so this, these are the statewide percentile rankings. This is where schools are when it comes to achieving, where you rank relative to all other schools in your group. You'll always see this, or you have seen this with Superintendent Burkett's goals and with principal's goals, is to increase that percentile ranking. So where we have Cushing did go up in their percentile ranking. Gates has made leaps and bounds in their percentile ranking. I have never seen in all my career the same number three years in a row, but there you have it for Hathaway. Incredibly high achievement. Jenkins, even though Jenkins is a school of recognition, the actual ranking is 84, but I'm going to show you why. It's because of Jenkins meeting their and exceeding their targets as a school, which is really our biggest competitor. We should be competing against ourselves over and over every year. Situate High School took a large dip in their percentile ranking. Situate High School and all high schools really should be the crown jewel of a district. So I'm hoping that this year we're working to polish up that jewel and get this moving in the right direction. Wampatuck, this looks like a significant drop. Wampatuck has been so high, it is very difficult to keep everything up there, especially when it comes to growth rates. But I, they are, they're very competitive with the other schools. So they are ready to move that back up to the 90s. And this is overall great news. Questions about that before I go to the next slide?
You mentioned that you're going to polish up the high school. I couldn't agree more. I'm just wondering like, what does the polishing look like? Can you give us some evidence?
I do have a slide, actually, that I'm going to give the breakdown of where they can make those improvements.
Great, thank you.
And I'm also going to show how I'm also going to show Jenkins, how they made it as a school of recognition, which is, I hope eventually when we are.
Heidi, kind of, kind of on that, kind of on that point, I think last year we sat here and said, how are we gonna improve Jenkins? Or how are we gonna improve our overall scores? This is what we're gonna do. I'd be curious, other than Jenkins, what, as much as you can tell us, what did we do in those other, other schools that maybe didn't work as much as we had hoped? Or what are we gonna do maybe differently going forward?
I can't make specific comments about individual schools, but I can tell you that I actually did a deep dive into the data with every single principal in Situate, some twice. Because they are making sure that their school improvement plans and their school councils address explicit goals. So for example, I know last year, Wampatuck's goal was to improve mathematics, and if you look at their math achievement, they absolutely met that goal. So there, each school has different explicit goals based on their own accountability chart, like the one I showed you that we have for the district. Okay? And this is something that I am just sharing. These are the statewide percentile rankings of our surrounding high schools. I know it's a little busy, but I wanted to make sure that at this point, again, a high school should be the crown jewel of a district. This, this is where we are in relation to Cohasset, Duxbury, Anneover, Hingham. And you see some, some are going up, some are going down, but the bottom line is, we want our percentile ranking to be as high as possible, period. And there are some districts that we are slightly above, but this is absolutely not where we want to be. And we have not recovered at the high school level to be where we were in two thousand and nineteen. A common question that people ask is, does this connect to property values and things like that? Usually, yes, they, they do. If you have a higher property value, typically you have a higher percentile ranking, but does the chicken come before the egg? We don't know.
Heidi, what about, property values, a whole nother discussion, we just got our new assessments, everyone goes by ten percent. So I'm not really sure that the MCAS is that correlation. However, incomes, I did a quick little search today on median incomes, and I think that we'll find that these results are pretty much in line with median incomes across all of these towns. Is that something that we?
I can actually show you this slide with some additional detail about that, because that is typically the case. But it doesn't have to define us.
No, I, I agree, I totally agree.
What, okay? So now, what about individual schools? So Jenkins is a school of recognition, so I'm going to pull up Jenkins right now. Hope the link works. How about that? So if you look over here, the accountability percentile is that school in relation to all schools in its bucket, if you will. They're at the eighty-fourth percentile. Although it comes to meeting or exceeding targets, Jenkins got ninety-nine percent, which is, I mean, absolutely amazing. So if you look at, maybe, please zoom. No, alright, I'm not gonna risk it.
See, they're all on the left, on the state.
And this, absolutely, this will be attached to my school committee update when we send it out. So when you look at, I'm gonna go into the leads a tiny bit. When you look at this chart, Jenkins earned.
We're already in the lead.
No, no, not even close. Jenkins earned four points out of four points for all of these areas. The only place they didn't earn four points is in English language arts growth, where they earned three points in the lowest performing students group. Now, years ago, I don't know if you remember, they would, they would sort of give schools a one, two, three, or four ranking. And each subgroup, they called it, had to meet a certain level, or you would get a ranking of three, so on and so forth. So the state decided that that wasn't fair, because not every school district has as many different student groups. So what they did decide is that every school district has lowest performing students. And that's, they calculate that by averaging the English and math scale score. And then they look at the bottom percent, and those kids weigh for fifty percent of your, of your target criteria. So when we go over this, and we wanna see what does this mean, this is a super fun tab. You can click detailed data for each indicator. And this gives you literally the detailed data by every single student group and area that they are judged on overall as a school. So at Jenkins, the average achievement for ELA, it meets the, meets the standard, meets grade level expectations. That's absolutely spectacular, they exceeded the target of five oh four, so they did awesome there. Here is.
How's the target set for growth?
That is a, that is a wonderful question. So the targets are set by the state, typically after we've already taken the MCAS. However, my advice to any teacher, any principal is, the target itself, there's no point in trying to work the numbers. We want every single student to do the very best they can, no matter what. So we don't have to crunch the numbers or worry about a target, we just have to do the very best we can. And when we don't meet where we need to be, we have to get better, period, and be honest about it.
They go through and set the targets?
Oh, yes.
There's a formula on this, you're right.
Yes, some psychometric magic.
Right, exactly.
Yep.
Interesting.
Yep, so if you look here, instead of exceeding the target, the high needs group here met the target, because the target was, was not far away enough from this target. It's only point five away. So they say you didn't really exceed it, you met the target, because you're in a certain range. That's where these rubrics come in handy, if you really want to enjoy this. And you can scroll down to see the growth. And that colorful chart that I had, I think that's easier to read than this. But you can see exceeded typical growth, typical growth, and where, where the points are, where you fall. It just matches that color coded chart. And attendance rates, you can see chronic absenteeism also by student group. And if by some chance we didn't have ninety-five percent, which we usually have a hundred percent of students assessed, we would immediately be a school in need of support, which we don't have at Hingham. So based on all of that, that is, that's where Jenkins fell and earned all their points. Something else that's new this year, if you did wanna look at a specific student group, so I wanna look at high need students. They, this year, gave student groups percentile rankings among like students group, student groups across the state. And you can see where we measure up by student group as well, and principals are definitely digging into that.
Heidi, also another question there. So this is obviously, you know, complicated for analysis wise, for, I'm only gonna speak for myself, obviously. But for principals, you know, how, what are, what is the district doing to support principals and understanding this data?
So I actually conveniently have, oh, he's still here, good, Principal Beatty, who may want to speak about what we've been doing over the past two years.
I'm not saying that these individuals are skilled at deciphering data, it's complicated.
So I've been working with principals, principals are then working with their teachers. And how we look at data, I think, has been different, I wanted to share.
Sure, I would definitely say since Assistant Superintendent Triscoll joined us, we have become more skilled at looking at school-wide data and then breaking it down into the different student groups. From there, we're able to set goals and develop programming to target specific areas of need. I do think we've been provided with a lot of different data sets and data points. And basically, as a principal, understanding where a percentile ranking comes from, the balance of achievement, growth, and attendance has helped us to set some measures. And we know that in order for students to come to school, they need to feel welcome, so that's what all of our social emotional pieces link to. We know that students need strong curriculum and good instruction. And the data tells us the areas that they're getting strong instruction, they're getting good curriculum. It also points out different areas that we need to focus on, and so that's been helpful. And when we look at the graphs and we're seeing kids improving and kids growing at rate rates, that's what we wanna see. So I, I feel like the trainings that we've done as principal groups with Assistant Superintendent has been especially helpful over the last couple of years.
So I'd also like to commend Principal Beatty, because he really, if you look at his trends, it is an upward trend overall for Gates Middle. So I wanna thank him for his work, because sometimes working with data is scary and hard. And he and the other principals have really made it their job to become experts in being able to do this work. And that's, so, thank you.
There's still lots of improvement to grow.
Thanks, yeah, and to that end, I'd be interested to see how that does connect to curriculum and instruction and materials and what we use and how, you know, okay, we identify an area of need and growth, what does that mean for the kids in the classroom and what materials they're then getting to see that growth? What are the changes being made?
One number on here wouldn't be able to inform everything, but the principals and department chairs also in particular are looking at this to break things down all the way to the item level and the classroom level. And I think that, on my next slide, there's another, okay. So Gates accountability percentile is steadily increasing, they jumped from sixty-two to seventy. And their focus for FY twenty-four is mathematics growth and achievement. Hathaway has sustained a high accountability percentile of ninety-one. And their focus is to ensure that the high need students meet targets at the same rate as all students. They're addressing an achievement gap at Hathaway. Cushing, again, I wanna shout out that fifty-nine point nine, that really, they wanted that high growth, they're almost there. Fifty-seven point nine was the math growth. And their focus is fifth grade science, that did not reach its achievement target and actually decreased in average achievement, but it'll be a focus for next year. Wampatuck's current fifth graders, so this is a great example of a goal and a principal addressing a goal. The class of twenty thirty-two, when they took MCAS as third graders, fifty-six percent of them met or exceeded expectations, so that meant, that means nearly half of them needed improvement in math. And as fourth graders, seventy-nine percent met or exceeded achievement in mathematics at Wampatuck. So that is a huge achievement, so congratulations to them for going on a particular goal, that's just one of many. And Wampatuck's focus area is increase, is increasing achievement and growth for the high needs student group, which again, means closing that achievement gap. And the high school is refocusing on achievement and accountability. And I'd like to show you the high school's accountability report. So this is, Carrie, these are those details that we wanted to look at here. Out of four points, the high school earned one point for achievement in English language arts, zero points in math, zero points in science. If we want to know why, we can go to that detailed indicator. And we can see, for all students, the average score is five eleven, which actually does meet grade level achievement, but it was no change, we sustained and didn't move. We went from five oh two to four ninety-eight, which is two points away from meeting grade level standards for high needs. But technically, it did decline. So if you have a declining overall scale score, we don't get points for that when the, when we're going in the wrong direction.
Heidi, I have a question. Not in the high school.
Oh.
I mean, just, I guess, I guess a concern that I have is, so fifth, you had Cushing, fifth grade, science was a focus for next year, so.
Like a forty.
What's that?
Like a forty.
Yeah, so I agree with, so obviously that's a focus, but I don't know what kind of questions, but, but for those kids who didn't perform well in fifth grade, what, are, are we focusing their performance on sixth grade and making up for that deficit? Or is, is that just what is gonna, whatever sixth grade's focus is, we're gonna, not address what the deficiency was in fifth grade?
That's a good question, so science is an end of course exam, which is very different from math and English. Math and English build on skills, science is end of course. So when we get to that next batch of standards, they are being assessed on that next batch of standards. Same thing for the high school. Biology, chemistry, that's an end of course exam versus something you build upon. But obviously, our science department chair and our curriculum coordinator for math and science are very aware of this and they're supporting teachers to make sure we're looking at that classroom level data. Something to look at, though, again, sometimes even though you decline overall, if your average students are meeting grade level expectations, we have to go deeper and find out why, what is that student group that we need to support in particular? Not just do something for the masses.
That's a good point.
Do we have, do you have more questions about the high school chart? Again, the chronic absenteeism, even though we did get four points, we did improve, we exceeded our target, but we still need, we still need more.
Heidi, can you remind us, who qualifies to be in this group of high needs?
High needs was a, was a student group that was created so that students who are special education, English language learners, low income are not counted several times. So that would be an issue with the old accountability system, so.
All three of those together.
Exactly, so when I work with principals, that is the group that I recommend that they look at first and foremost, because there are no repeats. Let's see. And what next? So absolutely, we should celebrate Jenkins as a school of recognition. I hope that when we're looking at growth for, as an individual school, we all try to follow their model, which is basically get better than where we were in every area, period. Principals are sharing school-specific data with school councils and educators to make connections to school-level data, classroom data, and school improvement plans. And parents should expect that their child or their children's reports from the state, they should expect them in their children's backpacks in sealed envelopes. They're going home October sixteenth, Monday, October sixteenth. And there will be a post coming out for anybody who does not want their child's scores to go in a backpack. They're more than welcome to request to have them mailed home, and we will absolutely do that. Again, the district's focus, which I think you'll see reflected in Superintendent Burkehead's goals. We need to focus on overall high school accountability and percentile ranking, that's a, a high priority. And still, the same focus as last year, attendance and engagement, if we don't have those two things, we can't make moves with everything else. And I think, if that wasn't too long, that is my last slide, but I'd love to answer any additional questions you have.
I just was commenting on the high school, and you said that high needs is the low income in students with disabilities? So like, the high needs is the three, three different groups?
High needs is, yes, is anyone in any of those groups, yes.
Just that, it says, breaking down the English. Just that it says, breaking down the English language, informal English, I'm not that one. Students with disabilities, they exceeded a target. Low-income, not the target, but yet the high needs as a whole improved below target. So it's just, it sounds contradictory when you're looking at it, when they break it down.
Are you in math or English or?
Math.
And you're in growth or you're in achievement? The blue, that's achievement, okay.
It's just, I mean, it's disappointing that the high, the high school has shown, has declined overall, it seems, when there are areas that we are doing well, I guess, you could look at it that way.
Well, so overall, though, we declined in mathematics at the high school by point seven. Again, it's super close, but if we decline more than point five, we get zero points. That's how it works. The average being needs grade level is, is nice, but it's not great that we have these gaps. So for example, if all students are at four-oh-eight and students with disabilities average is four-ninety-two, that's an achievement gap. And that's something that we need to address. So even though students with disabilities did exceed their target, their target is substantially lower than overall student achievement. And we want all students to be moving.
Right, no, absolutely. I mean, I think when you look at like some of the numbers, it's like we are doing good work, but overall, we have a lot of work to do.
Oh, absolutely, absolutely.
I mean, I just think I want to second the, I just really want to hear more about the attendance. Just, I mean, seriously, like, I mean, there are, there are nonprofits, I'm sure Miranda knows more about this, but there are nonprofits and other companies in this country that that's all they do is work on interventions for attendance. So I'm really interested in these stories, like what are the reasons that our students are, I mean, if you're missing eight, that's a lot, I mean, that's a high percentage. And like, I mean, I keep taking your point in, Heidi, which is there are multiple students who are missing way more than the, than the baseline. So like, I just wonder what's, what's going on in this district that that's happening, that's all. I'm just curious about the stories, that's all.
Well, I hope that individual principals are getting those stories right now. When students are absent this early in the year, it's really important for principals and counselors to be reaching out so we can address and stop patterns before, you know, before it's excessive. And as I say that, I have a child who's home today from school, so I apologize to Bridgewater Rehman. Dick, what can I add?
I think this is probably for another time because it's a longer question, but I guess when I see MCAS data, it's interesting to look at and, you know, all that, but it is retro, like retrospective. You know, you are looking backwards in time, children who don't have different grades and things like that. And so I guess as a teacher, I know it's much more helpful to have real-time data. I know we do a lot of benchmarking and things like that. I guess I'm curious to know, and again, I don't expect you to answer this right now, but do teachers shine that they have enough kind of real-time data that they're getting? Do they have enough time to look at it? And do they feel like it actually is predictive of a child's performance on MCAS?
So I love that you asked that because something that we're working on with department chairs right now is a breakdown of school-level data. It's not one of the Edwin reports, it's actually a customized report that we've been working on with Steve DeCross that shows student growth, student achievement, any level that they're in or any student group they're in, as well as attendance right next to it. And it's important for teachers to be able to look at that and compare district, school, their own students, so they can decide themselves as experts. What do I, is there anything I need to share with my practices? Or is there anything I need support on with my practices? So I hope that this year, when we get to sharing that with our department chairs, with classroom teachers, I hope it will be incredibly useful because it was a lot of work to put together.
Just a quick follow-up to that, is that happening at the elementary schools too? Because you said department chairs, so I'm curious, like, what are the structures in elementary?
Yes, so, yeah, Heather, we have curriculum coordinators, Megan Gregory and Heather Allen. So they do the same thing, and this has been a shift, I think, over the past couple of years. They do the same things that our department chairs do. It isn't, accountability is for the high school, not for anyone else. We all look at it together. And I'd also like to make sure where, with our language, when we talk about this, although we're looking at mostly MCAS scores, accountability is not strictly MCAS. Accountability is achievement, growth, engagement rates, dropout rates, attendance, and advanced. It's a whole bunch of elements. So even within our own accountability system, it's not just. Am I talking too much? I apologize.
I would just. Oh, I'm having my trouble. So I just would say, Heidi, you've been so gracious in thanking other people around you. I just wanted to thank you for this report. I have to say, in the couple of years I've been on the committee and longer as a parent, this felt like the just clearest report. And you took us into the weeds when we needed to, and you kept us up when we needed to as well. And so I just wanted to thank you. I'm, there's absolute honest acknowledgement that we have work to do as a district, and I appreciated that you did that and you weren't just cherry picking. That, you know, you could have focused on some of the awesome thing that's going on, and you brought our attention to the things where we need help and support. And so I hope parents are celebrating where appropriate and digging in, just like you and the staff and your team are, are doing. So I just wanted to thank you publicly for that.
I'd like to just follow up and concur with Dr. Bukowski. Principal Beatty had mentioned it, that there's been a sea shift in how we look at data. Now that we have it, obviously, it is with District Glinar position. So I think, I want to thank you also for the amount of work that goes into this and then the trainings. Most of the districts I have been into, they bring people from outside and they don't have their, you know, individual trainings by Assistant Superintendent, who sits with each principal one-on-one and groups multiple times. So, and then also with our department chairs, she's got enough credit for that. We're really working, our department chairs are strong. But they lack the direction and the latitude that she's given them to work with teachers and, you know, with boots in the ground. So I think all that's happening. So, you know, in summary tonight, I think there's a lot of really good news. But I will tell folks out there, we're, we're certainly not complacent. And I think a similar conversation happened when I first got here about the budget. There was a lack of transparency, there was concerns, things like that. So the first thing we wanted to accomplish tonight, you know, because hit on it, is transparency. You know, including, you know, we've been asked a lot about comparing to other districts. And then there's the whole, it's really apples to oranges, but let's show it, let's, those are, that's real. So we want to be the best, we have to show what other schools are doing and show our warts and how we can get better. But I'm optimistic that by showing all this and going to this level of detail and being open to our community and also sharing our plans for improvement, which we've already started. Will be reflected in my goals next meeting, but also the principal's goals, teachers' goals, we're all working towards consistent improvement for our kids. So I think we can guarantee that that is happening. We'll bring back, we got some good feedback from you all on what you wanted to see with the attendance and some of the other things that we're doing, we'll continue to do that throughout the year. And we, through our school improvement plans, you'll see a lot of this actual steps come to fruition. And lastly, I'd like to ask the community, the parents and caregivers out there, that this is a team approach. You know, something is, like attendance, you know, we can't always get the kids here, we need the family's help. There's some small line considerations with that, but a lot of times, if we have that partnership and that commitment, that's the number one thing, as we saw, that's glaring here. If we could just improve attendance and more kids are here, their scores are gonna go up. That's very simple. So if folks can help us with that, I think that's a really good first step in making headway because we've got great teachers in the classroom, we just need our kids to be there more often. So we'll continue to work on that. And that's also part of our growth for us is improving partnerships with families during these conversations. So, thank you.
Thank you, Superintendent Burkhead. One question, sorry. I forgot to ask you, Assistant Superintendent Driscoll, you had mentioned that if you wanted a school level to go to the school council meetings, for caregivers and parents who cannot make that meeting, are those meetings being recorded or should they just reach out to the principal to sit down with them if they want more of that data?
So they're not being recorded. They're not being recorded, but there are minutes available.
Okay.
And I would, the best place for parents to start is when you get your student report, make sure you understand your student reports, start there. If everybody does their piece, I think we're gonna be in great shape.
You're welcome. Just one more comment about attendance per that partnership that Superintendent Burkhead mentioned. I think any feedback that the district has for parents, like what else, you know, I think, you know, if you have eighteen absences, the school year is, you know, long, that you don't, maybe it's not obvious how many your kids are crewing over. I mean, it sort of does sneak up on you in some, some certain years. You get sick for a couple day, you know, three, six, nine, all of a sudden you have twelve absences throughout six months of time. But, so maybe thinking more about what, what else can we do in terms of connecting with parents? And more broadly even, not just, I know you're targeting specific individuals in buildings that have those kinds of absence targets and, and trends, but even just kind of acknowledging anyone can, this year, my family could have an extreme amount, you know, just because. So, you know, even prevention-wise, how do we prevent others from accidentally sinking into those holes? And what else can we do? Is it workshop? Is it, you know, whatever it is, presentation? Oh, the letter, I mean, the letter is like, just, you know.
I think you measure what you value. So we're, we're, tonight publicly, but we're also with our families and the principals, we'll do this at, you know, their level. It's just speaking this truth, that this is showing these numbers, they're, they're really, you know, when you look at them, we all have to reflect on that. And I know that, you know, even at the high school, for example, you know, Principal Ranger and his new team in there. I saw even Tardis, he's, he's watching, they're all watching Tardis. Tardis to class, Tardis to school, not just attendance, so it's down to that granule level, level there outside. In fact, I think I saw him running in with a kid one day who parked illegally. So he was out there to get the kid in trouble for parking in the wrong parking spot, but the kid was parking there, it was just to get to school on time, and they're gonna go back out with permission to move the car. So that was pretty cool. Students, that, that message is getting out there and resonating with, you know, our kids, but you have to talk about it with, with families. For those that need assistance, you know, with, with the kids, we can, we can help. But it's a, it's a district problem. It's, and I think somebody asked about comparables, just talking to other superintendents, it's across the state. But, you know, that's not our problem, we, we need to worry about our kids' situation, so we'll do that. And the good news is it's been, it's improved pretty considerably, I know, but that's, maybe it's not really, you know, we're settling now, if we're, we're accepting the numbers we see, we can do a lot better, and I, I know.
And, and correct me if I'm wrong, but Desi doesn't take into consideration if a student is out for a number of days due to like a major illness, correct?
Yeah.
They don't, they don't take that.
I think Ms. Driscoll mentioned it is, the numbers you're seeing, Desi's indifferent. They don't know, they don't want to see excuse, everything's, if they're not in the classroom, it's.
Yeah, time off of work.
Period. Let's run a field trip or things like that. That's what I think is, I think that's a good point, Mr. Boulon, that parents need to know that we kind of haggle over if it's excused or not. Desi doesn't care, those numbers are, if they're not in school, we have to report that, they don't care why, it's an absence.
Yes. I just wanted to make note that I actually don't think we are due just to discuss the attendance policy in today's meeting. We had looked at it, made some notes on it, I think we're gonna discuss it the next meeting. But I think all of this to say, one of the reasons we wanted to review it was because of this misconception about the excused absences, to switch up some of that language and just reinforce the kind of like expectation of communication home if more than five days are missed. And we hope that that will be a good opportunity for just more parents to become aware of the policy. And I think, we'll have to look into this, but I think that if a student is absent for extended medical reason, but they are receiving tutoring, I believe that means that they are counted as present. So that is one, there is a, there is something that.
There are medical examples where, yeah, so thank you for clarifying. There are, there are circumstances unique that students do get credit if it's obviously a medical or some other.
Right, but like you go to the dentist, you might think that's excused, it's not excused because you're physically not there.
Alrighty, thank you very much. Okay, so the policy update is that there is no update?
No, 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 there is.
Alright, just kidding. Alright, policy's on committee, Janice and Marie.
So there was another policy related to school councils, so.
Oh, right.
So by voting on the new policy, we just, it kind of makes this one obsolete. And so we just have to vote to.
Delete it. Alright, yes, makes sense. Take a motion on deleting policy.
Make a motion to delete policy file BDFA-dash-E-dash-three, Conduct of School Council Business from the Situate Committee Policy Manual. Situate School Committee Policy Manual.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Alright, we have our September eighteen minutes for approval.
Motion to approve the September eighteenth, twenty twenty-three minutes as written.
Right, all in favor?
Aye.
Alright, warrants?
Thank you, I have the warrants from August. So the business office was very busy in August, and we had five warrants. I'll just read the totals with, with a couple of comments. For August third, nine-hundred-and-sixty-thousand-one-hundred-and-seventy-five dollars and six cents. And that was primarily the Jenkins roof and the high school roof. For August tenth, one-hundred-and-fifty-six-thousand-five-hundred-and-seventy dollars and twenty-nine cents for a variety of different things. For August seventeenth, two-hundred-and-five-thousand-eight-hundred-and-forty-five dollars and twenty-eight cents. Most of that was around the construction project. For August twenty-fourth, two-hundred-and-ninety-nine-thousand-nine-hundred-and-seventy-seven dollars and sixty-five cents. And for August thirty-first, four-hundred-and-fifteen-thousand-four-hundred-and-seventy-eight dollars and thirty-seven cents. And most of that was the high school warrants.
Thank you.
I just have a quick question, I don't know why it's the first time I've seen this, but can you just, can you just help me better understand the circuit breaker line item? I generally think a circuit breaker is money coming in, I'm just curious what it means when we have a warrant for it.
Sure, circuit breaker is revenue from our students who are attending, have the district tuitions. So we receive that money as revenue from the state, and then we're expected to use it in special education expenses.
So we're, that's the revenue that we're using from that line item, okay. Got it, thank you.
Thank you very much. Alright, no correspondences? Nope. Any other business that someone would like to? Yes.
The November tenth?
Yes.
Yes. Other businesses?
Alright, definitely.
I think, well, I'd just like to say, I didn't think we realized that, I don't know why, I feel terrible not realizing that we probably should have considered, considered no, no school on that Friday.
Right. Too late to.
No.
We just extend the year by a little.
Yeah, we have to.
I mean, I do remember being explained, I know it's on the record as being explained, I just don't think we quite processed.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Are we doing agenda items now?
Sure.
Janice, move ahead. So I just wanted to, we had talked last time about potentially having a further conversation about our program with the Boston families and getting models around the state, so I just don't want to lose that. The other thing I was kind of hoping we could add at some point, because we're so lucky to have a new HR person, I'd love to have her back first just to get to know her a little bit better, but I wanted to specifically discuss sort of what's her sense of best practices for our district. Perhaps she needs more time to get into the weeds on that, but I. sort of what's her sense of best practices for our district. Perhaps she needs more time to get into the weeds on that, but I'm thinking about things like exit interviews for staff, and like, what's the policy around that? Are we conducting them? Who's doing it? Are we, as a school committee, able to get a summary of what's going on in terms of people leaving the district, so, so we can continue to learn? The other thing I'm really interested in, I had heard from a couple of folks, that she's very skilled at thinking about recruitment and sort of pipelines for more diverse staff. And I would love to hear what she's thinking, even if she doesn't have anything in place yet, but like, what is she thinking about? What are the conversations? What's been her experience about the, around this to help us out? And then the other thing is, I don't know if this is true of Situate, but I know that HR directors are often referred to nowadays as, you know, people managers, and that there are, well, and there are, I mean, in the C suite, they're really hiring people, whatever that would be, chief people officer. With that said, I'd, again, love to hear what her experiences has been with supporting staff. Because, as we all know, mental health, burnout, it's, it's real. And we have an excellent staff, and I want us to be doing everything we can to hold on to our staff. And so I think, you know, our, our, our current HR director has been fantastic. We have someone new coming in that perhaps has ideas, a fresh set of eyes to talk to us about what are we doing beyond sort of at the building level? So, so exit interviews, recruitment plans, supporting staff, and just generally, I just would like to pick her brain about best practices and hear what she thinks.
Love it, great. Bill and I can talk more about that in terms of agenda setting and where that.
Yeah, and I didn't mean to spring that, I just, I just wanted to bring it.
Anything else anyone wants to add?
I guess on, on that slightly different topic, but same idea. I know that in the years past, we've been trying to do some survey or get some feedback on recent Situate graduates. Again, kind of similar, I don't need it right away, but I was kind of thinking, and Nicole and I talked about it last couple of weeks. We talked about MCAS and a lot of things that go on in the district, but I think ultimately our success, and I was thinking a lot about it today, is our success is the tension of the students. Our main goal is to prepare them for post-high school. How are they doing post-high school, right? I think that that's gonna also measure how well we are doing. And I know it's hard to do, I know we made a couple of attempts to do it, just maybe provide a, I don't know, a way to gather some of that data, just so we see how some of these kids are doing, either in post-secondary, or, you know, in whatever they're choosing in their career or in their education, just to see how they're doing. And maybe they can come and give us direct feedback, say, this is what really prepared us well, or this is what we wish we had. I think we have some of that data, but I would like to continue to, to do that. I don't know what time of year, I don't know if right now is the right time, because some of these, you know, different transitions, but something that I would like to, to discuss.
I, I, I know Tammy's bundle has always presented on that. And right now, with the college stuff going on, it might not be the best time. I know that they reach out to graduates and ask what they've been doing in their experience.
Yeah, I'm thinking like, it's not freshmen right now, but maybe sophomores, juniors, things like that, maybe kids have even, you know, tried one college and then went to another school. Just some level of how Situate has impacted their success or struggles or whatever in their post-Situate life. But again, not immediate, it's just.
Excellent. Anything else before we adjourn? All right. Make a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn at eight fifteen?
All in favor?